Landy's Board, I talked to the state webmaster. And how we have all this on the website. The Landy's Board is going to take the audio and she's going to upload it so that anybody that wants to listen to the readings and stuff can do that because they get a lot of requests about CDs and stuff like that.
Did you use an upgrade on your phone?
Oh, okay.
Or not just don't make it to the meeting.
No, not yet.
If they go and listen to it.
Why? What happened?
Okay, we are on. You ready?
James Patana? No James Patana? James Patana?
Yes.
Just in shock?
Greenwich Township Committee Special Meeting, September 29th, 2016. Roll call. Kenya?
Yes.
Mark Haddick?
Here.
R.C.
Here.
Spencer.
Yeah.
All right.
(Inaudible)
And the quick notice that this meeting was beginning in quarters with the open public meeting act by mail and the schedule of the township meeting to the Express Times and North Starleture newspaper, posting a copy on the township bulletin board and filing a copy with the township department. We need Mike here for one and two, right? All those.
Mike said he was coming. We can just take the vote and have him tell them tomorrow they need to send a letter asking them for a speed limit review on Greenwood Street.
Okay.
So, I guess we'll come back. We're looking for a motion. I guess you do that.
Yeah, okay.
Call the motion attorney.
I might have to take it. Those aren't up there on the table.
If it wasn't a pen.
Before we start, are we now open to a public comment? Are we doing that tonight?
Well, I see it's at the end.
Oh, it's at the end. Okay, alright.
We can probably do it before it's settled. I'll make a motion and we authorize the town. I'm sorry.
No, no. Bill or?
I'm sorry, what?
I don't need to say anything.
No, I had to say if you want to do an open assessment, we'll then exactly.
Mike, yeah. I'll make a motion and we authorize the township attorney to direct a letter to the Warren County, I guess Engineers Department to conduct a speed limit review on Greenwood Street.
Second.
Kenya?
Yes.
Haddick?
Yes.
R.C.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
And so that's the township attorney?
Yes.
Well, I guess Finelli could do it too. I guess find out which one would send it. Finelli or?
Number two is a Mike.
Can't do without him.
And I don't know when he wants to do it, so.
Did that go out the bid?
It's going out Monday the bid.
Or the specs ready?
Yeah, so, I don't know. Bill, you have to table this until Mike?
Well, we already voted on it, but he said he's going to be here tonight, so, you know. Mike said he.
He told him we didn't need him.
What are you talking about?
Oh, Finelli, okay.
Yeah, Finelli.
I'm talking for number two.
And Kathleen?
She got him a coffee.
Yeah. So.
And not everybody else. You want to table that and see if Mike comes in?
I think we can go for number three. We're table.
What do you want? I guess this is all because of what I said last meeting, discussion of the special meeting to discuss me. Is that fate already for?
Honestly, until the auditors come in in February to do the AFS, they're not going to know a whole lot anyway as far as where your surplus is and all that good stuff, so.
Well, we can start talking to the department heads in December. I'm thinking December. I don't think we need to start.
No, I'm going to send out, as you guys requested, send out to the department heads and get that process rolling.
Yeah.
So we can check it all those end because.
Because we might as well wait until after the election and if Paul would happen to when he could start sending out those.
I'm already in the process of reviewing last year's, so I can deal with on speed.
Okay. So we're done with that, right? Mercantile licenses?
Well, under this, I know there's some issues here. Sherry has been working on that and trying to come up with what's been paid, what's not been paid. So, I'm going to ask Kim to give us an update, where have we been the last couple of years with the mercantile licenses?
The last couple of years, I've manually sent them out to businesses that have received anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. I have an updated list from the Police Department and Warren County Communications for more businesses based off of my listing that I had. And I've also spoke with some other towns and I've asked Kathleen about this with Edmonds. Edmonds has a software program in the system there that we presently have.
But that's going forward. How about let's go back to the last 10 years?
Why are we going backwards?
Well, I want to know why stores have not been paying. Shoprite, when was the last time you collected from Shoprite?
I'd have to go back and look into Shoprite.
How do you follow up? You send out a letter requesting this, which I believe is by ordinance. How do you follow up when somebody doesn't pay? Do you give them 30 days? Do you give them six months? A year?
I've sent out letters and honestly I haven't followed up if they have sent in.
Why haven't you followed up?
Why haven't I followed up? It's one of the items that, other things I've been doing besides just mercantile licenses. You know, if I calculate some of the mercantile licenses to date of what we have, we think we're getting anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 approximately throughout the various 10 years. If we're going to go back 10 years.
Well, I'll go back 17 because I don't know how long the, I believe it's in the 90s that that ordinance has been on the books. So, if Shoprite has been in town for 17 years and you've never collected and they would be.
We haven't had an ordinance for 17 years.
Well.
A mercantile license hasn't been on the books.
It's been over 10 years. Okay, so I'll give you that leeway. Okay, 10 years, Shoprite is supposed to be paying $250 a year. How much is that that we didn't collect? $2,500? Yeah, I think that's about right. That's just one merchant.
That would be, okay.
Shoprite, okay. How about five below?
I can't say that they haven't.
Okay. How about five below?
Because when they come in, I am the CFO. Five below?
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to go back and look and see on the list of receipts to the CFO as to what accounts have been put in.
Well, on the list that I have here, and I don't know if it's complete because I haven't done any research, the minimum is $50, the maximum is $250. So we have the potential of collecting, if you're in $2,650 and $14,000 on an annual basis. Okay? I really need to know why this hasn't been collected, why follow-up hasn't been done, and if it was a manpower issue, why haven't you informed the committee, this committee, the previous committee, that these fees have not been collected? If it's an ordinance to collect these fees and it was your responsibility, I want to know why it wasn't followed through.
All right, well, let's see.
Are we going in the rights notice area here?
No, I don't think this is rights notice because this is.
The performance of the township parks elected to bring it out into the open.
This is an ordinance.
I have spent the past 10 years since 2008, spending the first five months of the year collecting all the things for recycling tonnage where the paid money is. Do you want to know to date how much money I've received in from that? $1,860.
That's fine, that's your responsibility to collect.
No, it was never my responsibility. I never got.
Well, then why didn't you tell the committee?
I did.
Okay? And then why didn't you say, "Look, I need an extra pair of hands" or something to do it? Come on, Kim.
I asked for an extra pair of hands, Bill. I have come even to.
You need to answer to the taxpayers and this committee why fees have not been collected.
Okay, fees for mercantile licenses.
That's just one thing. I can go back, I can bring people in that have applied for grants that you failed to get to the state in time.
What grants?
Huh?
What grants?
State police grants.
State police?
Yes, yes.
What was state police grants?
I'll get it for you.
State police grants that I.
We have a former trooper in this town that used to be working for the state police and excuse me.
State police grants that I was responsible?
I'm talking.
Okay.
Okay, his, the grants were delayed in getting down to Trenton. He goes, "I'm in charge of getting these grants out to the various towns and I can't even get it to my own town."
And, oh, okay.
And you want me to bring in the chief of police too? I'll bring in the police and I'll bring in the previous police chief.
That went right next to you. Only on state police grants, that's what we're talking about. I know exactly what we're talking about.
And how many do we not get?
I got money in for that.
Every year?
Every year we didn't have, we didn't get money every year on them. I know exactly why.
Do me a favor. Give me an answer by the next meeting, October 20th. Where we stand, why we haven't collected the ones for, let's see, that will be 10 months, okay, almost 11 months, why the rest of these aren't filled in.
Okay.
And give me copies of the letters that you sent out to this committee.
We sent out the letters to the committee. I had an assistant for a couple of months and that was one of the duties I tasked her to do. I said, "We need to jump on this and start getting these in." Sent out the letters to all of them and then when the letters were sent out, found out that the letter was sent out without the application. So that half of them couldn't do what they needed to do because they didn't have the application that I had to go back then and deal with. And now I'm dealing with no help again in my office to do this and this is a duty of the clerk. So if someone else is doing background work on it, it's not their responsibility. When they were in my office and I was overseeing them, that's one thing.
Well, that's the duty of the clerk. Actually, that is the duty of the clerk, but we can change that by a municipal ordinance to delegate that to another municipal officer.
Licenses?
Yes.
The statutory duty of the clerk is licensing and that can be.
Except where a statute or municipal ordinance has delegated the responsibility. So we could pass an ordinance to delegate this somewhere else.
You can change the municipal business licenses and you can change it to whoever you want to send them.
Well, we'll just try and come up with a resolution.
Yeah.
And that is a good resolution, so it can continue.
That would be a good thing to do.
Well, we will continue this discussion. Because the bottom line is.
Now that we're in an open session, you know what? We're in an open session. We've already talked about, we've already talked about my personnel here. We've already talked about my performance. Let's pull up the letter I just gave you tonight.
Absolutely, but before.
Let's do this.
Excuse me, but before we do this, okay? All right, I'm reading a letter here, all right, that involves another employee. I think we need to write that employee.
Well, I was given a rice notice that you were doing an investigation of theft from these from Shoprite.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Every Shoprite invoice was pulled, everything was, receipts were read.
That wasn't from me, young lady. Listen, Kim.
It never came from you.
It never came from me. The only thing.
So you did it on your own.
Let me speak. Hold on, let me speak. When it comes to Shoprite, for the 9/11 party or ceremony they had up there, I said to Sherry, "Just get the credit card from you. I don't know who has signatory powers to that card and just take it, you know, go to Shoprite." That's all. I have no idea what you're talking about here.
All the accounts.
About theft using a county.
Are you looking me in the face and telling me that no Shoprite bills were pulled?
I don't know.
No Shoprite bills were pulled and no receipts were received.
Not by my order.
Were received.
Not by my order.
Okay.
Okay? The only thing I told her to do is get the card because she was going to get the food items on a Saturday for the ceremony on Sunday. And I don't know who signs the card, but apparently anybody that's in possession of that Shoprite card can sign it.
Yes.
That was the end of that discussion. Then today, I come in here.
Why am I being questioned?
Excuse me, I am talking.
Oh, okay, okay.
I come in here tonight and I'm seeing that I'm accusing you of stealing and of theft?
Yes, yes.
I have no idea where it came from. So, you know, you want this to go to the township police and then the prosecutor?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. My guess.
I want it.
But before you do that, you need to write Sherry. We need to write Sherry. Before. Wait a minute. You asked me earlier if I knew anything about this. I don't, but if someone asked to pull Shoprite receipts, how does that, how do you infer that that's someone looking at you? I don't understand the nexus here.
Because I was questioned personally by our finance whether or not I needed to confess have I ever used that card.
Who's your finance? Kathleen?
Yes. Yes.
Where'd you get that from? Kathleen, I.
Wait a minute, I think we're waiting until a rice notice. She needs to be race noticed, she needs to be race noticed, Sherry needs to be race noticed. This has to be changed.
Well, conversations should have been race noticed from the very get-go.
You brought it up.
No.
I'm asking, no, mercantile fees are an ordinance and the public has a right to know why these fees aren't getting collected.
Okay.
That's fine, but this needs to be race noticed. So this is another discussion.
And since we don't want this to wait a month, I will make the motion that we hear this next week. We won't be around next week?
I'm busy.
We'll figure out a date.
Just wait until the next meeting.
I'm out of town on the 20th.
That's the next meeting?
That's the next meeting. I can call in, I'll be on my way home from York. You know, I won't get here till about 7:30.
When's the 20th?
What would we do to raise notice last?
Yeah, we can come back.
I honestly don't know why we need to do it again. It's already out there. Sherry pulled the Shoprite bills. I did say to Kim, "Kim, is there anything I, as a finance person, need to worry about?" I did say, "I have that kind of relationship with him." I said, "Be honest with me." She said, "Absolutely not," and I believe her.
Well, so how did that infer that someone was doing it? I still don't understand where we get to this investigation.
Exactly. There was nothing from the committee. Sherry looked at those bills, but for her, that's it.
Who told you to pull them?
Yeah, that's what I don't know. Who told her to pull them?
Sherry works in my office. If she's pulling bills, she has every right to do that.
And who's telling her to pull bills?
Oh, we can't. And for what purpose?
We can't, we can't discuss this when it's there.
Well, for what purpose? If we read further down in this.
Ah, we're stopping this.
About the keys, I need to hand in my keys because there's cash in the offices and I can't be trusted to be anywhere near the cash.
Who's giving her the authority for that? I don't know, but we're going.
Who's giving the authority is correct, so.
Right, I think we have to end this conversation.
This is where the race notice is going to come into play, so.
Well, it's getting out there that on the fee and that I can't be trusted with money around here and I am sure good enough of a performer here to take in bills and to do things. And you know what? Tell me whatever you want, but you're not going to call me at the, not happening.
I haven't heard anybody say it to you yet, though.
The situation's out there.
It's out there.
It's out there.
That's coming from me. I don't see how asking, like, if I said, "Let's pull how much through we purchased this year," I don't know how somebody can construe that I'm targeting someone. I don't know.
Well, we can say that there was an issue in another township of someone using a credit card and purchasing their own personal items and this was the same darn thing that was being looked at.
I really think this discussion should be stopped by now and then, rice notice should be sent down to the proper people and it'll be handled at the next meeting.
I'm good with that.
Frank, you want to do Tom Stewart Park with Mike here?
Yeah, Mike, you remember we had our last open space meeting, your last put some agenda? Number two.
Yep. Okay, just to bring everybody up to speed and I've got this little small, we do set plans, so.
The sign is very nice up there, too. They put the sign in today.
Oh, they did? Because I haven't sounded when they put, oh, I bet it does.
About three o'clock or something.
I know, actually, we'll go to the community guy. Matter of fact.
Not much.
So, I bet, so, nice.
Please cut the weeds around it and not be handled.
Good. All right, as, you know, and we've been reporting every month about the status of the project and where we're at and so forth. So, as reported a month or so back, we've separated the project into phases, so we're going, phase one is what's going on the bid first. Hence, I guess, why we call it phase one. We're looking to put the notice in the paper next week, actually Monday, and if you look at a, if you can.
Is that the first or the second?
Third.
Third?
Yeah. Okay. All right. The, the next regular meeting of the township committee is the 20th. That only would give, and we would have to have a bid opening at least a couple of days before the actual committee meeting, with the hope of awarding a contract, that's what this is all about. Okay, so, that would, that would only put it out the bid for, in essence, two weeks. So. So, for, we didn't think that two weeks was enough to have it out the bid for only two weeks. Contractors tend to give higher prices because they cover themselves a little more, so, you said if it's out three weeks, that's a decent chunk of time and it'll probably help get better prices and better bids.
Mike, are we doing like a, any, anything for like local contractors, preference or anything like that for us before we go to the big wigs?
Well, we, we can't do anything. However, if there are local contractors that you know, there is nothing wrong with you mentioning to them that there's a profit out the bid and, you know, they can come and get the plans at my office and so forth.
I mean, if there's any, like, any kind of preference we can put in there, like in a local contractor preference approach?
No, no, I don't want to play attorney, but I know the public contracts are all pretty normal. You know, it's unfortunate, no. It's going to be.
Hey, just questioning, yeah.
The lowest responsible bidder. That doesn't always mean it's the low bidder.
Right.
Because it has to be the lowest responsible bidder. Now, with this two, three weeks discussion, we said we move the bid opening date another week back to, let's say, the 27th. The 25th of October, which leaves it out the bid three weeks. If we have a special meeting on October 27th, which is two days for us to review the bids, coordinate with Mike Labor's office and Kathleen and so forth, if necessary, so hopefully on the 27th, we can actually award a contract. I mean, there's a lot of things still need to happen and whatnot, but that's reasonable, doable and would allow for construction to start in November, hopefully. So, the, the request was to, you gentlemen, was to at least, not the need to authorize Kim to do it tonight, but maybe she should, is to set up that special meeting on the 27th, so it's already in the books.
October 27?
October 27, you want to go seven o'clock again?
Is everybody ready? Am I good, Charlie? Billy in the house?
Mm-hmm.
7:00 P.M. standing?
7:00 P.M.
And this is to award?
To award the contract for the phase one construction of Tom Stewart Park.
When's Santino cutting the corn? Or cutting the?
He was saying in October, so I think we're fine. Last time I talked to him, which was a couple of weeks back.
I know, they started cutting already up there.
Yeah. Now, and also just to include you on a couple of things, we're, we're going to be resubmitting to, we've been talking with the county, we've actually have to submit a driveway permit application with the county just for the, it has to be a construction driveway for phase one. But that's, you know, that's part and parcel of just our normal work with the county on the approvals. We've got to resubmit the phase one plans to Soil Conservation District, but again, these are all formalities. It, you know, it shouldn't hold up any large construction at all. That'll know, we'll be taking care of it in the next couple of weeks. So that's, that's where we're at. Things are in good shape. We've got the phase one plans put together. Obviously, we'll talk about phase two from the beginning of next year, I would say.
Phase one with that letter you got back from, from the county, I don't know if you will ever let me, but it wasn't here. You got everything taken care of and all those things they got done?
The, we received a conditional approval letter from the county. We actually resubmitted to them a couple of weeks ago now, based upon that letter. We talked, I talked to Bill Leiva. Was it yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. And we have a meeting set up with Bill and the other engineer in his department that's been involved with the project Monday afternoon to talk about the phase one and also what may or may not be hanging out there on the overall project. So, you know, we've got good working relationships with all these other agencies and whatnot, so that's just the process of, you know, perfecting all these pools. So, we're running along.
Since we're talking about the park, maybe Bill, you could update him on the school board.
I spoke to Mike, I think I spoke to you last night. Yeah, so they gave the approval for the 850 feet, I believe that's what we figured out that we're going to extend the bike path or sidewalk or whatever.
We're going to.
Walking path.
Yeah, right. And they were concerned about the security, the chief was there to lead me in any fears, you know, and then their other concern was maintenance and they want to make sure the town's going to maintain it, salted, plowed, you know, I don't think there's going to be much use going that way, but, you know.
You're right.
Whatever they use, the machine they use to do the sidewalk on Greenwood Street, if they're going to do the park, you know.
Well, that's true what they're going to do, yeah. I don't know whether they're going to, well, they probably.
Is that an eight-foot walking path?
Yes.
So as long as we keep it eight foot, it can be plowed.
Yep.
With a plow truck, if we're going to lower it, then we're going to have to use that machine, which is going to be more manpower time to clear that path.
So, you know.
Let's really try to keep it eight foot.
All right, well, that puts up, no, the path is eight feet wide.
But the path of a school property is a continuation of that, of that.
I don't think that's eight feet.
I don't think that's eight feet.
Right.
Because it should match whatever's there now.
The school path is six feet.
Because it's matching the path that's already there. It's one feet uphill, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying it's easier with machinery wise and manpower time.
Yeah, but do you want, I mean, do you want a truck riding on that's the other side, you know?
Yeah.
But you got two inches, two inches plus you have the base underneath it, so a truck driving on it, just like with low path parks, walking paths. We used to drive on with cop cars, we used to drive on with plow trucks, so it'd be a lot more, it's a mile, a mile walking path.
Yep.
Put a mile walking path in the machine, plus the other times that we're going to have another guy sitting out there doing that stuff where we can spile it in 15 minutes.
Well, here's the, the reality.
That's what I'm looking at.
Well, the walking path is phase two.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, there's definitely, I mean, you know, there's a, you know, the buildings, the pavilion, the concession stand, the walking path.
Yeah, what I think about the walking path, that is not a walking path like the one along Greenwood Street which is used for traffic, in other words, to get from one place to another. That's strictly a recreational walking path. So the town has the option in whether or not we even want to plow it.
Right.
I'm going to say you don't have to plow it.
You're only around here the 24 hours around.
They used to do it at the end and because of the storm, yeah.
So, we've already noted, and let's, you know, we're going to talk about this part for.
Yeah.
A number of months coming up.
So, Mike, the heat's on now, the sign's up, everybody sees it.
Well, I'm looking forward to see the sign.
We're going to put some solar lights on tomorrow.
Was it?
We'll put solar lights on tomorrow.
Oh, so everybody's seen it now? Beautiful, good.
We'll put Mike Finelli right there.
Yeah, so, no, I'm aware of that. We are fully committed to getting the baby on, you know, get the break around.
Hopefully our next Trinity Day will be there.
We'll see. We're led to his ears.
Is Mike the, is Mike also one seventy-three speed limit in the highway?
Are you, Mike?
Well, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
That is the, the, was it a letter or was it an email?
It was a letter.
Okay. All right. The... The next regular meeting of the county committee is Wednesday. That only would give... And we would have to have a bid opening at least a couple of days before the actual committee meeting. With the hope of awarding a contract, that's what this is all about. Okay, so... That would... That would only put it out the bid for, in essence, two weeks. So... So, for... We didn't think that two weeks was enough to have it out the bid for only two weeks. Um, contractors tend to give higher prices to cover themselves a little more, so... He said if it's out three weeks, that's a decent chunk of time and probably help get better prices and better bids.
Mike, can we do on like a... Um, any... Anything for like local contractors, preferences or anything like that for us before we go to the big wigs?
Well, we... We can't do anything. However, if there are local contractors that you know, you had... There is nothing wrong with you mentioning to them that there's a project out the bid and, you know, they can come and get the plans at my office and so forth.
I mean, if there's any like any kind of preference we can put in there, like a local contractor preference card?
No. No, I... I don't want to play attorney, but I know the public contracts are all pretty darn awful.
Yeah.
You know, it's unfortunate, no. It's gonna be...
Hey, just questioning, yeah.
The lowest responsible bidder.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that doesn't always mean it's the low bidder.
Right.
Because it has to be the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, now, uh, with this two-three week discussion, um, we... We said we moved the bid opening date another week back to, let's say, the twenty-seventh. The twenty-fifth of October, which leaves it out the bid three weeks. We've... If we have a special meeting on October twenty-seventh, which is two days for us to review the bids, coordinate with Mike Labrie's office and Kathleen and so forth, if that's necessary. So hopefully, on the twenty-seventh, we can actually award a contract. I mean, there's a lot of things still need to happen and whatnot, but that's... That's reasonable, doable, and... And would allow for construction to start in November, hopefully. So, um, what the... The request was to, uh, you gentlemen, was to at least... Not the need to authorize Kim to do it tonight, but maybe should, is to set up that special meeting on the twenty-seventh, so it's already in the books.
October twenty-seventh?
October twenty-seventh, you want to go seven o'clock again? Uh...
Is everybody ready? Not good, Charlie?
Good.
William, you ready? Seven P M., Charlie?
Seven P M.
And this is to award?
Uh, to award the contract for the Phase One, uh, uh, construction of Tom Stewart.
When's Santini cutting the corn? Or cutting the...
He... He was saying in October, so I think we're fine. Last time I talked to him, which was a couple of weeks back.
Yeah, they started cutting already, okay.
Yeah. Now, uh, and also, just to include you on a couple of other things. We're, um... We were gonna be resubmitting to... We've been talking with the county. Um, we've actually have to submit a driveway permit application with the county just for the... It has to be a construction driveway, uh, for Phase One. Um, but that's, you know... You know, that's part and parcel of just our normal work with the county on the approvals. Um, we gotta resubmit the Phase One plans to Soil Conservation District, but again, these are all formalities. Um, it, uh... You know, it's... It shouldn't hold up any large construction at all. That'll know, we'll be taking all the care of it in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so that's... That's where we're at. Things are, uh, in good shape. We've got the Phase One plans put together. Obviously, we'll talk about Phase Two from the beginning of next year, I would say.
Phase One with, um, that letter you got back from... From the county, and I don't know if you remember last night, but it wasn't here. You got everything taken care of and all those things they got done?
The... They received a conditional approval letter from the county. We actually resubmitted to them a couple of weeks ago now, based upon that letter. Uh, we talked, I talked to Bill Gleyba... Was it yesterday? Yeah. Yeah, yesterday. Um, and we have a meeting set up with Bill and then the other engineer in his department that's been involved with the project Monday afternoon to talk about the Phase One, um, and also, um, what may or may not be hanging out there on the overall project. So, you know, we've got good working relationships with all these other agencies and whatnot, so that's just the process of, uh, you know, perfecting all these approvals. So, we're... We're running on.
Um, since we're talking about the park, maybe Bill, you could update him on the school board.
I spoke to Mike, I think I spoke to you last night, right? Yeah, so, uh, they gave me approval for the eight hundred and fifty feet. I believe that's what we figured out that, uh, we're gonna, uh, extend the... Bike path or sidewalk or whatever.
We're gonna...
Walking path.
Walking path, yeah, right. And they were concerned about the security, uh, the chief was there to lead me in any fears, you know, uh... And then their other concern was maintenance, and they wanna make sure the town's gonna maintain it, salt it, plow it, you know, I don't think it's gonna be much use going that way, but, you know.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, they... Whatever they used, the machine they used to do the sidewalk on a Greenwich Street, if they're gonna do the park, you know.
Well, that's true what they're gonna do, yeah. I don't know whether they're gonna... Well, they probably will.
Is that an eight-foot walking path?
Yes.
So, as long as we keep it eight foot, it can be plowed.
Yep.
With a plow truck. We're going to lower it, then we're gonna have to use that machine, which is gonna be more manpower time to clear that path.
So, you know.
Let's really try to keep it eight foot, I mean.
All right, well, that puts up... No, the path is eight feet wide.
But the path of a school property is a continuation of that... Of that, um...
I don't think that's eight feet.
I don't think that's eight feet.
Right.
Because it should match whatever's there now.
The... The school path is six feet.
Because it's matching the path that's already there, it's one feet uphill, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying it's easier with machinery-wise and manpower time.
Yeah, but do you want... I mean, that... Do you want a truck riding on that's the other side, you know?
Yeah.
But you got two inches, two inches plus you have the base underneath it, so a truck driving on it, just like with low path parks, walking paths. We used to drive on with cop cars, we used to drive on with plow trucks. So it'd be a lot more, it's a mile, a mile walking path.
Yep.
Put a mile walking path in the machine, plus the other times that we're gonna have where another guy's sitting out there doing that stuff where we can spile it in fifteen minutes.
Well, here's the... The reality is...
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, well, the walking path is Phase Two.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so, I mean, there's definitely, I mean, the... You know, there's a... You know, the buildings, the pavilion, the concession stand, the walking path.
Yeah, what I think about the walking path, that is not a walking path like the one along Greenwich Street, which is used for traffic, in other words, to get from one place to another. That's strictly a recreational walking path. So the town has the option in whether or not we even want to plow it.
Right.
I'm gonna say you... You don't have to plow it.
You're only around here the twenty-four hours a day.
They used to do it at the end and because of the storm, it was...
So, uh, we've all noted, uh, and let's... You know, we're gonna be talking about this park for...
Yeah.
Uh, the number of months coming up. Uh, it's good to have...
So, Mike, the heat's on now, the sign's up, everybody sees it.
Well, I'm not sure if we're gonna see the sign.
We're gonna put some solar lights on tomorrow.
What's that?
We'll put solar lights on tomorrow.
Oh, so everybody's seen it now? Beautiful, good.
We'll put Mike's finale right there.
Yeah, so, uh, no, I mean, I'm aware of that. We are fully committed to, uh, getting the baby on, you know, get the break around.
Hopefully, our next Trinity Day will be there. That'll be nice.
We'll see. We're led to, uh, his ears.
Is Mike the... Mike also one seventy-three speed limit heading driveway?
Are you, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, that is the, um... The... Was it a letter or was it an email?
Uh, it was a letter from Tanya Siegel and a letter from, uh, I don't know, D O T.
Yeah. The... Tanya Siegel wrote a letter, uh... No, I don't have it with me. She wrote the letter to the D O T, correct? And they responded to her basically saying, "We needed to initiate the request." Okay.
Let's look, a hidden driveway signs, do you want?
Yeah, well, there's a... There's a... Offset speed limit, one seventy-three, apparently. I haven't checked this out where heading eastbound, it's... It's X, I don't even want to quote the number, it's fifty-one. And heading westbound, same section of road, it's Y, it's fifty. Uh, so, you know, so Tanya is obviously saying the lower speed limit should be on the side of the road that's missed posted, maybe never signed properly. I don't know how that's a kind of a quirky thing that that exists. Uh, and I don't dispute that it exists, but I haven't checked it. Um, so, it's just a simple letter to the D O T. Uh, the hidden driveway part, where is she talking about the hidden driveway?
The house.
Her house, yeah, her driveway, her son's house.
Yeah.
It's a driveway that's kinda, it's there.
You know, the eastbound though, one seventy-three, if that's the less, I could see why, because of the hill, there's a blind spot there. So if you were going, for instance, fifty instead of saying it's forty and come over the crest, you may not have enough stopping distance at fifty. When the... After the car in front of you clears that hill and say it's not.
Yeah.
But coming the opposite way, there is no vision of... Hidden, uh, vision of obstruction, so I could see where there could be two speed limits there.
Well, that's... That's very unusual for the same section of road to post...
Yeah, and... And that... And that bridge down on the bottom there years ago was even narrower and they just had, uh...
Yeah, forty, yeah.
They had the thing, so that... I could see where that... That's probably where it got caught up years ago.
So, also...
Is there some kind of action out?
And it's the letter, the response letter that Tanya got, Tony got from the D O T, basically, if the township sends a letter in support of your request, we'll entertain the action. So...
What's the exact request? To look at it or to lower it?
Make the consistency to speed limits and add a hidden path.
I don't think our request should be make it consistent. Our request should be, please review it again and make sure it's correct. Because Bill... Well, Bob was just saying that there might be a reason for it to be different. I don't know.
One way you have a sight distance, the next way you don't have a sight distance, your sort of speed might be lowering, and the other...
Yeah, so...
There could be a reason, right?
Yeah. But speed is, well, very...
But I know I'm going back thirty... I go back thirty-five, thirty-seven years. There was some fatal accidents in that stretch going down in that hallway, especially where that, uh, bridge going across this creek is. So that could have been from that far, I don't know, or even before that.
So what's your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation is if you're... If you take no exception to what Tony is requesting, like this, I'm kinda like the milk back here. I didn't know so much.
Here's the question. I just don't know enough about it.
So, here's the question is, her driveway may not only be the hidden... Only hidden drive there, there's another farm right across from where Baby's Road comes out down by the church. So, I... I guess if we had the review, maybe they need one put up by like, uh, Ravine Road that says, "Hidden drives ahead," there's like...
Twenty-seven or eighty of them.
Yeah, I don't know if there's that many, but there's... Could be as many as three, three anyway.
Three, four, at least five.
Okay.
Hidden driveway.
You know what?
Hidden driveway, so...
Well, I don't think, I'll be... I'll speak for myself. I don't think I'm as prepared as I should be to discuss it if you guys... I...
Take a look and then we'll talk about it again.
I forgot this is gonna be on the... Yeah, sorry. Even though I didn't know that, you know, with Tanya's letter came in, that I had Kim, I think Kim had said, "Do you want to throw it on, necessarily?" Okay, sure. Uh...
Do you want to review, come back?
Yeah, let me... Let me go to the letter, obviously, I know Tony. I'll even give her a quick buzz if there's any questions of what she's really looking for. In my travels, I'll look at the road and then make it nice and simple. I can, we can update it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yes, there's... We're probably... We're just all, but I'll speak to my folks. Well, I'm kinda like, uh, Fred, Fred boy here, so let's move on.
Thing like that.
Next item, I guess we gotta wait for the attorney to be here, right, the new concerns.
Do we have any concerns?
No, I think he wants one for calls, excessive police calls, I think he's looking for.
Can we have each provided a sample, one, I think, from Washington?
Yeah, but, uh, you know what? I'll go over to Labrie and see if her we're ready to discuss it next meeting.
Okay.
Then, before we go into executive, I think we should move public comment before executive, so people can get the way now.
I have a couple of items here that I need to vote on, and I wanted to make sure I can do it. Um... The recreation department sent me, and I have it here, I can get it printed off. They want, you know, if we have some money, thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars in order to spray the fields, infield?
I got a question for that, because at this time of the year, and probably in another two or three weeks, the stuff's gonna be dying around the, uh, the backstops and stuff like that and being in the past.
Well, this is the infield, and...
Joe Mexi spoke to me about that too, and what he was gonna do in Brian Weeks', uh, when they were getting together, they were going to, uh, with Lowpatt Special Machine to do the infield rototilling. They were gonna come over and rototill the field in the fall, so that way, by springtime, everything is kinda settling down, and they were gonna do their mix, because they wanna put the field mix down over there.
Yeah, he wants to put... I think they're gonna put it down there for, yeah.
Field mix down, but...
Right.
Joe was gonna rototill everything under, which is gonna take care of the weeds that were in the infield of the recreational area, it's gonna save us eighteen hundred dollars.
That won't kill the weeds.
It's gonna rotate it down about two feet, and the stuff they're gonna put in there is gonna kill the weeds.
All right.
And Joe was speaking to...
Well, I don't know much about it, because I'm just asked to, you know, I have to have...
I spoke to Joe, I spoke to, uh, Joe about it, and he spoke to Brian about it, and he was speaking to Mark about doing rototilling now, which is gonna take care of all the weeds, because they're going down those two feet.
If that will save us money, that's great, and hopefully, uh...
Fifteen hundred bucks.
Hopefully, uh, it will work for them.
It will, they do whatever you're gonna tell them.
Okay, um... All right, the rest we can do after executive session.
All right, can I make a motion to open a public comment?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening, my name is Wen Tai Wen, of Bell Green Road. Um, first of all, I wanted to talk about something I observed, um, from last meeting. Since we are all the Greenwich residents that, you know, coming over to talk about these specific issues that we are, you know, they have concerns about, and I really would like to appreciate that the county committees and will talk to the resident, residents that who came forward and with respect. The way that I said it, because, for example, well, Frank, I thank you very much that you actually pulled the public comment session up earlier, just so that people who have any concern they can talk about it first before moving through, you know, the post or the session. And it's very considerate. And last... Last meeting, I saw one of our residents' father actually came here to express his concern about busing issue. And he attempted to come to talk in the first, uh, public comment session, but Mr. Kenny actually told him, say, since that was in his, um, discussion agenda, it was asking to wait until his discussion. And so that father actually went back and to wait for, you know, his, uh, term, I guess, I guess, a quick... He should already have a term. But, you know, when Mr. Kenny talked about, that was way after, because we had a forty-five minute delay on the beginning of the meeting, and then by the time Mr. Kenny talked about the busing, and the father attempted to talk, you know, raise his hand, and Mr. Kenny addressed that, "Well, you have to wait until the public conversation." Now, there is nothing wrong, but I would like, at the same time, in the same meeting, and I have seen, uh, Mr. Maketa that bring up one of the meeting items about Dave, about the ordinance, about, you know, the property, something about the, uh, the ordinance for Dave, the zoning officer.
Right.
Because he saw, he saw you sitting in the front, and he actually said, "Let's move my, uh, one of the items up, so that Dave did not have to sit in the meeting all night." I thought it was very considerate as well, okay? But I just want to say is that we all respect each other during the meeting, and even if it's a county resident come forward to say something, maybe you disagree, maybe you agree, and perhaps we should give them the floor time that they deserve to stop and express their concern.
Well, I think we do give them the floor time, because each resident that comes up for an open public comment has a minimum, maximum of three minutes to express what they have. And what they're doing is they're expressing to us their concerns, which I got notes all over the place when somebody comes up to talk about a topic, and then whoever is on that committee, whoever's in charge, are usually discussing about the, uh, the issue at hand, or we go back to the department head to speak to them and say, "Hey, listen, this resident brought this up, what can we do? Weeds in the roadway, uh, property maintenance, whatever the subject is, is addressed and handled." So we do give everybody the right for the, um, the open public comment. Along with the busing issue, you know, Bill and I talked about it, he met with the student tenant of schools about it, and it was discussed as to the costs and the factors, and we know about how there's roads and conditions. Safety of our residents is our first priority when it comes to that.
Of course, yeah. Uh, what I have no thought about it, I'm just saying is my observation from last meeting, and then I'm always able to stay here and talk about my concern, my issues, and there was another problem, but I might have, so what happens, I feel for that, uh, the resident, because I happen to know him. He was here the previous meeting, waiting outside the closed door for almost an hour, now, because somebody informed him there was going to be a open session with, uh, discuss about busing, and there were actually more than one person waiting outside when we have some kind of, you know, closed door session.
When the microphone's open for open public comment, and every resident in the whole audience can have a discussion, can come up and express their concerns about it, or if you have ten people discussing the same topic, you can have one person that's gonna be the speaker for everything. I wasn't here the last meeting, so I don't know exactly what was going on, but sometimes executive session runs late, and we always try to have an open public comment prior to going into an executive session, and then we usually have an open public comment after executive session.
Yes, correct, so, but unfortunately, last week, not at the last meeting, that father couldn't stay any longer, because he worked in New York, and so he had to leave, so he didn't get a chance to speak to that, you know, so that's my, you know, same thing that...
Something... Something we may find interesting, uh, previous committees, when there was open public comment, they would never even address the public. So if you stood up there and you had questions, nobody on the committee would even answer you.
Why's that?
That was their prerogative. I think this committee, I give this committee a credit, because we do engage the public. So when you come up and, like, right now, we're talking to you, this would not have happened in a previous committee. They would have...
Yeah, but I was told last meeting that it is not a, you know, session, that's why.
Well, it can go on for hours.
You don't want to want...
You have to stop it after a while.
It has to be some type of a minute, but...
If you need any funds, you have a community service, you know.
It's a... It's public comment, it's not public... It's not a public conversation.
Right.
But a lot of times, you know, we'll see somebody, maybe from a rescue squad, or you might, uh, it's something in your neighborhood, I'm gonna say, "Hey, you know, what about, you know..." So, you know, we wanna have an open dialogue, really, we don't wanna be up there, hey, you know, not hearing from you.
And, wait a minute, it's a three-minute week, we give... We say three minutes only because of that, so we can keep the meeting moving along with everything else. I mean, does it go over? Yeah, I mean, there's...
A lot of times it'll go over, and a lot of times people just tell us the same thing in five different versions. That'll be fifteen minutes, you know, so...
But like Frank said, we do engage, and we do answer your question, if we can answer your question, after everything, as much as we can, because I would like an answer if I have something.
So are we answering the questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of concerns, but I'll leave that to...
I think also, Kim, I'm not familiar with you, but she didn't wanna address that email?
Yes.
Yeah, the email we got, yeah.
That email as the one you sent today?
Yes.
And the one you sent last time?
Yes.
I'll forward it to the police chief, because that's an internal affairs matter that can't be addressed by us. It has to go through the police department.
Yeah, I thought that, um, because my personal internal affairs, you know, is more of, um, the infant, uh, ankle of...
They... The Internal Affairs Division has a whole separate way of doing everything, and we're not involved in that.
It's not completely go, seems, or it's...
That's all... That's a police matter.
But I do want to bring up this, I did receive a copy before this.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I sent an email to Kim stating that, and I forwarded the chief Hummer also, again.
I get copies, thank you very much.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure of that for you.
But I do, I was concerned maybe I can send an email for George, that's something, you know, that's not everybody's private concern, if I don't have the time to...
Yeah, I mean, you can send an email, that's fine, we send it to the clerk, and the clerk will forward it out to whatever you're discussing, whether it's building in the grounds, the road department, the park, the police, education. I mean, we all have different, um, functions, and we're all responsible for different areas of the town, so if you wanna address a certain area, the busing issue, Bob, um, Bill does the school, so he would hand, uh, get the email from Kim for that, or the police department, or whoever, so...
So, will we have another special meeting?
Uh, what, another special summer meeting? Not as... Not, not that I'm... I don't plan on calling any. I think we got, you know, a lot of, it was a lone meeting, we got a lot... Were you at that meeting?
I was here at one of the special meetings.
The big meeting, though, if you weren't at it, I recommend you tell you are, okay. Thank you for coming on.
Well, being four seventeen North Main Street, Storso, wasn't prepared to comment on that, but you guys are so, are you're so much open to public comment, uh, it's nice to see. Because for four or five years, it's been a little booed.
I... I just wanted to comment, I had the opportunity this week to see the recycling tar blacktop machine, I don't know exactly what it's called, but hot, the hot in place recycled asphalt. There you go. Amazing.
That was amazing.
What it did, the result, I'm under the impression, Mike, that there's still a top coat that goes on that yet?
Well, it, there's a surface...
No, it's...
Which is micro-surfacing.
Right.
It's not in the whole world, it's exactly...
But would that be, I don't know, because you all have different responsibilities, because if you have the opportunity, this machine's gonna be working again in town, well worth the ten, five, ten minutes to stop.
Are they gonna be around on Monday, though?
We should... We should... Well, I... Hold on, I should actually update you on what's going on, because there's something, there's something to talk about.
And that's what I wanted to say, I thought it was...
And well, I hope when you sit in this seat, that the dialogue will continue as a...
Absolutely.
Remember the three on it, three minutes.
Did you ever resolve the parking issue?
Yes.
How many more?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So recreation's fine?
Well, I hope so. Mark was gonna look at it, and I gave them explicit instructions per Mark. Mark Moore carries suggestions about where to park, how to park. He lives right there, so he said he would look, if there's any problem, he'd let me know. Now, they're gone, because they can't work with that equipment in the rain. So, all these guys are from Buffalo, New York. They, when they go on a job, they actually get hotel rooms in the area and so forth, and I told them the other day out in the field about the Sands Casino, because they're actually, that's my, that's where it's saying.
That's extension.
I mentioned about the Sands, and they're like, "Really?
There's a casino? So I think, well, last night, I think it might have been.
Oh, they're not staying there, though. They're getting their money.
And, okay. Uh, because.
The next one is concerned, if you want to say.
Because of the weather forecast, they're now in Buffalo through the weekend. They were, they were hoping to work Thursday, Friday, well, today, Friday, and Saturday. I said no work on Sunday. Uh, but because of the weather, it got pushed back, so we'll be back Monday. Now, here's the, the, the issue that came up yesterday. Yes, yesterday. Uh, I mentioned to you last meeting that there may be a phasing of this project, that the Hot Place will be done now, and the micro-surfacing, the surface treating, because micro-surfacing is much more temperature dependent. Okay. Well, we've been talking, obviously, that micro-surfacing gets done through the state contractors. We didn't bid it out, it's not, so we're not, we have, it's a separate contract, it's not through BlackRock who got the Hot Place one. The micro-surfacing contractor is basically saying, he's not sure if he can get out of here. And like, I told you, like, what he, what he said, well, the Hot Place guys now are saying, well, wait a second, Mike. We need this done now, because it's not gonna, we, we won't guarantee this work if, if you're not gonna come in after the fact and do this surface treatment. I'm like, well, I said, what am I gonna tell you? I said, I can't make these guys come. If they say they, they, they can't come because of the weather, I, I mean, they can't sit over the winter like this, and then come in the spring and, and do the, the surface treatment? And they're saying, no. Uh, they said they wouldn't want to do that. So, 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 now, this is grand spanking new news in Oakland. Thank you for bringing this up, because.
Is that because in case the piles start running over and start chipping it up?
Well, it's just gotta be sealed. This material, after it gets basically recycled by these machines and relayed and then rolled, uh, it needs a, a surface treatment. And it does, and, and these guys are saying that they're not gonna guarantee the work. So I'm like, whoa, okay, well, that's, that's a little problematic. And they say, well, why don't we just wait till the spring? I'm like, because everybody's been looking forward to getting this done, we're telling them to wait for it, and blah, blah, blah. So, so I, I had quite an interesting meeting with them yesterday out in the field. All right. Uh, no decisions one way or another, I'm not saying that that's happening, it's, it's, you know, they're gonna be back Monday, they're gonna continue. I would definitely recommend you, if you haven't seen it, it's, it is pretty impressive. Uh, I've called a few of my associates and fellow engineers, and they're gonna have to come out, people look at it as well. But that was a little monkey wrench that got thrown in yesterday by virtue of this micro-surfacing schedule and the Hot Place guys' statement about needing the work done, like, after they're done. So, I, I wasn't, well, I was, that was a little bit of a curveball that, that.
So we just gotta try to get these other guys in.
Exactly. That's exactly what we gotta do, so.
Is it something where, like, I mean, if they come in a month from now, it's fine? Or is it all dependent to your depend?
Well, yes, it's gonna be too late for that. It's, a, a month from now.
It's gotta be a certain road.
Yeah, it's, it's got, if we can get them in by the middle of October, probably fine. And that's, but, and that's, that's a whole other. The, the micro-surfacing guys, which I learned, just learned as well, they come, they come up north in the winter, in the summertime.
Go south in the winter.
And then, they, then they go to Florida for the wintertime. So, you know, they're, they're looking at their move down to Florida for their winter, you know, work effort. Uh, so that's another, you know, curveball that I, I wasn't aware of, but, um, so just FYI, that's what's going on right now, still on schedule, but that, that was just from yesterday, so.
Can you make a suggestion to them, too? When they got, when they got their big roller sitting down at, at Beatty's Field, if they could take that big roller and roll that parking lot?
They're gonna do it, I already did. I, I said, I said that to them, like, the first day.
Well, Mike, let me ask you, if they don't do the micro-surfacing, are we doing all this for nothing? We're not doing the spring, getting anywhere, and all the work we're doing is.
Well, no, that's why we need to, we got these few days here, we've gotta, we've gotta coordinate with both BlackRock and Highway Rehab, which are the Hot Place guys, and of course, the, the micro-surfacing guys. And a micro-surfacing guy is, it's, uh, asphalt pavement systems is the name of the contractor who got the state contract for micro-surfacing. Uh, this guy's been Bob, um, Double Aqua, uh, we've been, you know, we've been trying to get, work with him, um, you know, he asked us to get that, but then, then he leaves himself an out for, you know, he's like, well, I'm not sure, Mike, when they're gonna be able to get there. I'm like, whoa, 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 wait a second. So, um, I'll, I'll know more in, in, in the next week. I mean, that's kinda right now, the one contractor is in Buffalo, and, uh, the other was ready to move to Florida. So that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah. So. No, we're still open, public comment.
Yes. So, sorry, but there's an update.
Anybody up for public comment? Most are closed. Second, aren't there?
I wanna go back to, uh, Mark Correteres on his way. So I did send him a quick text that you want to use the machine, the ropeette. And his comment was, they used it last year, it actually made things worse. Also, one field did not have enough dirt for it to work, it's just replanting, all the seeds dropped during the summer, more weeds. Could I talk at the end of the meeting? He said he'll be here in about 15 minutes, which.
Why don't we discuss, you know, Mark, Joe, Brian?
Well, the problem is, they want to get this done, it has to be sprayed before the end of the month, and if we wait to.
That's what I'm saying, because if we, even if we spray it now, the weeds are dying. Mr. Bean, yours alone may not die.
Changes going on there.
So, I'd rather give Mark the 15, give him a lead with 15. I do have a couple more things. Uh, do you want to mention about the police secretary?
Oh, yeah, we, part of the problem of the police department is with, uh, getting things done is, is lack of a secretary. And, Kathy, I think Bill, I talked to you, and I think you said we have enough in the budget to cover probably 25 hours a week?
Yes.
At $20 an hour?
Um, yeah, that should be fine.
All I would like to do tonight is at least make a motion to advertise for the position. We don't have to fill it, no commitment. See what we get as far as applicants, and maybe by, uh.
For the $20 an hour?
Should be five a week.
Five hours a day?
Yeah, 25 hours a week.
Yeah, 25 hours a week, right. See, the concern I had, I spent two hours with the chief yesterday at the school board meeting, they were in executive sessions, who were just, you know, I'm just asking him, you know, things. And, uh, he said, the lieutenant is tied up with a lot of paperwork, and he doesn't have the opportunity to do sufficient supervision.
Lieutenant's been tied up with paperwork since the day the secretary left. He's gone off the road. So we're still down one guy who sits in the office all day.
You tell that to the missing member here, okay? My thing is, if we go out and add, and, and come back on the 20th with a recommendation to start on November 1st, we're only talking eight, nine weeks in this year's budget.
So I guess, I'm, I'll make this motion, that we authorize the police chief to advertise for a secretary up to 25 hours a week.
Can I advertise for it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, how about, okay, I'll work with him.
And up to $20 an hour.
Okay, well, we don't.
Depending on.
We don't put the price in the advertisement, we just say part-time.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, and he'll give me some specifics when he wants in the ad.
As I say, are we gonna put qualifications, training?
And once, yeah, once you interview, that's when he'll tell them about how many, approximately hours and.
Well, we just want to know that the funding is there for what we.
So advertise for the police secretary. Now, do you want, um, a deadline, as, when are you looking to?
We're doing the 20th meeting, so, uh.
Yeah, I would just put it in the paper once, because advertising is so expensive. And I think word of mouth, you know, or people seeing in the Sunday paper, you know?
I can get it in the paper for this weekend, the 1st.
How many papers does it go on to?
It goes in the Express Times, and then they put it on NewJersey.com. So it's, it's on the website. So I could put it in for this weekend, the 1st and the 2nd.
Is it on the website, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, the police officer's on it, the website, yeah.
And then give them a deadline, the 10th is a holiday, like, the 11th of October. So then that gives the chief time to review the applications and then interview and make a recommendation for the 20th, yeah?
Yeah.
Did you make an motion?
I made a, I made a motion.
One second. Kenya?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Barsoni?
Yes.
Hunter?
Um, I said, do they have their Facebook page up, is it put on there?
Yeah.
If they do that, I can pull it up, only 5,000 people.
Do you have anything else, Bill? Are you done?
Maybe after executive.
I'm hoping to be out here after, is it?
Yeah, no.
Let's do it now.
Let's get it out.
No, I mean, it's up to you.
Okay.
Well, okay, uh, I want to rearrange the offices. I believe that with, uh, the tax collector, tax assessor, and the, uh, financial clerk using one office, I think we should move them across the hall. Kathleen, move into Kim's office, the other three will share that other larger office, and then Kim can take the middle office over from the CFO's office, and in the middle office for any additional staff. So.
I don't think that's a good idea personally, because Kim, being the township clerk, minister, or not minister, but township clerk, A, should have one of the biggest offices, because she has to keep her the records with all the files and stuff like that. The CFO is here only a couple days a week, and then back office. We made the one employee full-time in the middle office, and she's by herself about a day, basically, correct? Is that correct?
I guess.
Well, she's got.
These offices are all the same size, aren't they?
Yeah, they're all the same size.
Well, then, Kim's office is.
Now you make the same size as your office.
No, not Kim's office small. Have Kim go in that big office right there as the clerk, with all the records, and then keep it all the same.
No, we got three people in one little office, that's what we're trying to alleviate, the three people.
But the same people are at one time, right?
Actually, they are there sometimes.
Yes, sometimes there's two, there's two in there.
The schedule is Mondays, Sherry's here all day by herself. Tuesdays, Sherry's in the office, and at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, Eloise comes in, and Eloise is there from 3 to 5.
And sits at a front desk.
And she sits at her desk.
So they're not touching chairs or anything, correct?
Sherry's at the other desk. And Wednesday, Sherry's there all day by herself. And, um, Thursday, the tax collector comes in at 4:30, and Mark's at 6:30.
And Sherry's gone at 5:00.
And Friday.
So if they're splitting an office, I mean, what's the difference?
Several feet.
They're not button heads together, right?
Well, I say it not to wrong, I, I think it makes more sense to put all the finance on one side, and then move Kim to the other. As long as she's not losing space, I mean, I said that last meeting, if the offices are the same size, what's the difference?
I, I don't think all three of them should be in the big office, because they're all three of them aren't at the same place at the same time. So what's the difference if they stay on?
Who were the, what was the layout, the new layout that you wanted to go in? Just one more time, go over that.
I wanted Kathleen to use Kim's office, okay? Kim will go into an office with a large window, so people want to come in. Most of the time, I'm thinking they're coming in to see the clerk, uh, then the three.
Excuse me, what large window?
Well, don't, don't you.
Do I go over to her?
Yeah, don't you have a window, Kathleen, in your office?
No, there's a board through.
Right, and there's a doorway, where you can take your half-door and put your half-door over there, so, but you can see who's coming in. That's what I'm saying. Okay, right now, your office is closed.
No, I, I, when people come in, as soon as the buzzer rings, I see them on the monitor, as soon as they come in, I'm in the front office. When we talked about moving the offices around, the, how it was set up initially, and what this was done, and it was okay with the committee at the time, was all my records were moved upstairs, because the police took over the downstairs room, where all the files were secured. So I moved them upstairs, and had them up there, and had a setup for my assistant to be in the big office, and I was further to the back. So I have records in both rooms. Now that I don't have an assistant, it, I have two rooms there. But what happens is, when the buzzer rings, I go to the front window, and I deal with the people in that big office. So if there's an issue with space, I had said, you know, in talking with Kathleen, she's only here sporadic throughout the, the week, or on the weekends, and technically, she doesn't deal with any of the public, that my back office that's back there, you know, I could move the stuff out of there and put it all into the bigger office. Because when people first come in, they're coming to see the clerk, or they're coming to pay taxes, which is in the middle office right now. If, if Kathleen moves into the back office, back there, and then I have all my records and everything in the, in the office there, where I have a window installed with a shelf and the whole bedroom people come in. And if there's an issue with the tax office not having, you know, the space there, then move them into the front office, where the door can be, the half-door can be moved up to the front, and the other door can be pulled back, and they can work out of that, uh, front office.
Well, actually, I'd rather see them come in and go to the big office and ask to see the clerk, or ask to see the CFO, or ask to see the tax assessor, and have that office handle it. So I'd really rather have them go in, go to that window and see Sherry, and then Sherry will call you if that's who they want to see, or let whoever's in the building know.
But her office is going to be the first office, and then operate to her first, instead of the second window there on the right.
It's not the first office.
So what's the purpose of that? I mean, if Sherry's only there.
Well, I just, I just think it makes more sense to get all the finance on one side of the building, and the clerk on the other.
Well, clerk is on one side, and finance is on the other.
Yeah, but she has the largest, you know.
So how much room does Sherry need in an office?
Well, when there's two people in the. When there's two people in that office, some of the doors you can't even open up.
There's two terminals in that office.
Yeah, yeah, but we're talking about filing cabinets. They can't open some of the doors, because there's two people in office.
Okay, so we took the filing cabinets and then moving them to the middle office, or we move them into?
Well, then ask the clerk's office, and then, you know, they, you know, Sherry's not gonna be able to go in the clerk's office.
I don't see what.
So, Kim, what you're saying is, you, well, you want to go to the, move forward.
Yes.
And then see if I would take your spot.
And then they can move to the front.
Then they can take those two.
To her office, and they can have both of those offices.
Which makes more sense.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to see if we can get them some more room. I mean, like.
Because I, I feel, I mean, honestly, I feel bad right now, because I don't have an assistant. So I'm going up to the front office, and I'm dealing with the public right there. So that's where I will relocate up there, and take all my records from the back office, and, because all my records are in that big office right now, all my files and all my things.
But we're taking a lot of the jobs that we, you've been given over the years, that's why we did that. You're, you're just doing the statutory duties of the clerk, so your, your, your workload should diminish, not get greater.
I still deal with, I don't understand my workload. When people come in.
Before, you did everything. Over the years, everything's been dumped on the clerk, on the clerk, on the clerk. Last meeting, we discussed that and said, maybe it's time we take some of that away from you.
Right.
In fact, we discussed about you just doing the statutory duties of the clerk. So I don't see why you would need bigger space.
No, what, what I'm saying is, I have all the records of the township, regardless of the title as the administrator. I have all the records of the township and everything that involves regarding the township. But one of the statutory duties of the clerk is I deal with the residents that come in. And I deal with.
You don't have to deal with every resident that comes in, that's not your statutory duty.
The residents that come in unless it's something for the town. They come to see the clerk. They're either coming to see the clerk or they're coming to pay their taxes.
So maybe it does make sense to have you in the front office so they come to see you.
No, I agree with that.
But on this side, yeah. So you know what? Why don't we, this is having to be done tomorrow. Let's, we want to discuss, you know, job descriptions and whatnot. Once we nail it down to see who's doing what, you know, and how many hours, you know, Sherry's going to be here or not be here and...
Maybe you could bring a little schematic and some people's names.
Well, I don't, how far is it? I mean, we'll give, if Kim's going to get both of those offices, that's got to be the same size as the bigger office on the other side, so...
Yeah, but they're not interconnected. She's supposed to go to the other office, right? You have to get out of one office, go in the other office where if you're in that office over there, you're in the same office with all your records. It doesn't make sense to move Sherry into there.
I think it makes perfect sense. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Or something like that, or what?
What are you voting about?
Because she wants a window to see outside.
Who wants a window?
Sherry. Mrs. always complaining about she doesn't have a window.
You people infer an awful lot from conversations.
When she says it here in the front of the building, that's when it says, I want a window.
I'll make a motion that we move the clerk to the front office over here. We move the CFO to the clerk's office. We move the tax assessor, the tax collector and Sherry to the bigger office. Kim gets those two offices. I'm not going to see an argument over his face. I make that mo... I make the motion.
I think we should just deny it.
I make the motion. I made a motion. I'm waiting for a second. Nobody wants a second, that's fine. And where are...
I'll second it. I'll second it so we can continue the discussion. Technically, we can't really have a discussion because there's nothing on the... So, so I think you have something in one of them.
Nobody's losing space.
I don't think they should do it.
I can't believe this. This is ridiculous.
I mean, because if she's going to say full-time or part-time, we still have to figure out that before we start moving people around in an office. Is this lady going to...
Why wouldn't she go to part-time? We've hired her.
Well, we got to see if she still has enough work to work full-time. If she's not working in the clerk's office, half the time she's sitting here going, well, we can't talk about that. That's something else.
If I take the middle office, will I have an entranceway in there to go through there or...
Hey, we can eventually do that. I don't care. What's so big about going out the door, though? I don't understand that.
What's wrong with the door?
The other room's a filing room. You keep it locked. You have to go in there, you go in there. How often do you go into that cabinet? Are you not going to have cabinets that you work on it? I don't understand the big deal here.
It wouldn't make sense to have a filing room anyway. I was thinking about that before.
Well, a general filing room, yes, I agree with that.
Because how I have it set up in the big office right there is I have all my files right there. So I go into the files. They would all be surrounded in my office right there with me.
Now it's had three people in the office, now it's four because you're the fourth one, so you'd be buttoned heads again.
No, she won't be here. She's going to be over there.
If the files aren't all moved, how are we going to have enough rooms for all the filing cabinets in those offices?
Everything's the same size. That's why I understand what the argument here is. It's the same square footage. If it's over on one side, it's got to be up there.
If we move, if we move, if we move the filing cabinets out of the, your side of the building in that other, the front room, how many filing cabinets are we removing?
I'm moving six and my cabinet because it's in the room there now too. Six plus the cabinet plus she only has approximately, what, four, five cabinets along the wall on the top. I have cabinets on both sides, so I have to take cabinets.
You know what? We're hearing Kim's opinion. I'd like to hear Kathleen's opinion if you don't mind, unless you don't want to participate that year. You don't have to give your opinion if you don't want.
I think she said last time I slipped me a tummy.
And you, do you agree with either way or...
I'm happy if I come here, have a computer, a calculator, a pen and a pencil. That makes me happy. So I'll do whatever you want.
And some blank texts.
All right, fair enough.
This is why I mean, it's out of the way.
Mm-hmm. Well, you got a motion and a second.
You ready?
I don't know the law.
Well, I definitely think that the move needs to be made and, you know, so...
Time frame when we'll come up with a move? As soon as possible?
Yeah, you know, it doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Well, it's going to go fast. It's Saturday, so it's going to have to go fast.
Have to lend the motion if you want to say it.
Would you want to table it for the next meeting or if you just...
Well, he made the motion, so he would have.
Well, it was second, it was... And you just don't know, you don't know, just...
Been tabled for the next meeting.
Well, I'm going to vote, yes, either way. I just can't believe we spent this much time on selling, so...
I think it needs to be...
I didn't mean, I don't care, but I just can't believe we're having a conversation over six forty twenty.
Call and vote, table, go everyone to the next meeting.
Uh, yes.
Mark Hadden?
Yes.
Mark Neitz?
Yes.
Spencer?
No.
All right, I see that the head of the rec is here. So I know we're not really supposed to have a policy of texting, so I apologize to everybody here. But I thought it was a need to let him know because of the timeframe of being October. So Mark, now Wolf said that we can bring the equipment in from LoPat tillin'. How far did he say it goes there?
A foot and a half.
Foot and a half. So you made a comment on my text saying...
No, I spoke to Joe. Joe, I had a conversation with Joe about it.
Hold on, Kim, you have something you want to say? I'm just getting on the record. You saying something? What are you saying? You want to start packing tonight?
I'm trying to start packing up tonight because I got a lot of stuff going on.
Okay, let's start the record building and reflect that.
I will.
Sorry. No, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Want to come up? Um, I had a conversation with Joe after Bill's email.
I think it's...
Yeah, Bill sent an email and then I got CC'd on it. Um, and we spoke, he spoke to Brian Weeks about bringing the machine in to till everything with the weeds and all the stuff being laid. And what the recommendation was, was to till all the fields. I mean, you and I know what we all do to baseball fields. LoPat was going to come in, till all the fields, get them all done. We were going to put the stuff in the field for the weeds as was done previously and get it semi-levelled. So that way, we were planning on in the springtime having it semi-settled in the ground. So that way, if there's anything on the top, we can take care of the weeds like we usually do with all that stuff. Saving the thirteen hundred dollars. So that way, we can, you said you wanted two thousand dollars for... You were going to spend two thousand dollars on a top coat?
Well, yeah, I, so here's, here's what I, Joe did do that last year. They tilled every single field, every baseball and softball field. What had happened was two particular fields, one at GES and I believe one at 80s.
Which GES?
Uh, three of which I'm on the school. The all dirt infield only had soil that deep. So when he tilled it, all the stones came up with it.
Oh, so what happened?
Right. Those fields, the previous, this time, previous year, were the same exact way and everything went to seed. So all those weeds that went to seed dropped the seed and when he tilled it, it planted every single seed. And we had two-fold weeds this year. So when we got done playing, after we got done the old dragging, no maintenance had continued on the field. And if you look, at one point, GES had weeds knee-high.
In the infield?
In the infield.
Prior to the season or...
The baseline was now covered with solid weeds. You can't even see the baseline. So that particular field that didn't have enough top, or I should say base and top coat of soil needs to be addressed. It's probably costing about three thousand dollars of dirt. I refuse to buy three thousand dollars of dirt and throw those top weeds.
Well, I understand that.
So I, to me, that's counterproductive. So although I understand that, I did like the way that he tillied it work. He did it in the spring, which was about a week before the season and it became nothing but muck and mud.
That's why he was going to bring the machine over now. Till, do whatever we got to do, put the stuff in the soil to kill the weeds. So that way, it's kind of settled. So that way, in the springtime, we can kind of level it out.
I don't disagree with you because I don't want to waste thirteen hundred dollars of money. No way, shape or form. With that being said, though, I don't know how he's going to extract everything that's there now. I mean, there's mounds of weeds that are this thick and you couldn't pull them...
Is it something that maybe we can run a skid steer over?
He's probably going to have to, but the problem is, it's the most frustrating thing is we just spent five thousand dollars in the past few years for dirt on these fields and now he's going to go and do that and it's going to pull up most of that. They're rooted down. Now I got rocks mixed in. It's frustrating for me because in the years past, the DPW, they always just nail dragged it occasionally when the season ended. I tried to get as many teams to keep playing throughout the season so they would constantly use it. I don't know that it's a correct approach, what we're trying to do. I think it's a little late now to actually spray as I'm going to think about it.
It is, and we were talking with Paul back there and Paul was going to say it's late, late to spray.
And then the problem is, okay, number one, I have to condition them this year to have them ready for the spring because we all know snow is going to melt me from the next day to a week later while I play.
What about, like, if the machine doesn't, if it's set up a little higher so it's only skim coating the top?
So it'll work on, it'll work on five of the seven fields. The problem is it just, what it's doing is replanting all the weeds that's down. They actually have to scrape it out. The other thing is I spent fourteen hundred dollars on base anchors, which that machine, half of them, they didn't go there.
They were talking about what they're going to do is put furring strips in the holes where the anchors were for the bases.
No, I'm saying that when they did it with the machine last year, they hit all of them. They couldn't find them all.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I think we can find them all this year.
Joe's plan was to find them, he was going to bring the metal detector down, find them, put furring strips in the hole and then have the machine go around there and then rake it out by hand in that area.
That would probably work.
That's what we're looking at.
The biggest question is, I don't want to tax the DPW. I mean, I, they do a lot for us already. I'm looking to believe that. Problem is, if it's going to happen, I don't, not that I need it yet, but I just need to know that they're always going to do what they're going to do and I got to order the, 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 from whoever.
You're going to die up there and...
It'll be there. Actually, to be honest with you, the one at GES, I'm going to go with a lesser grade. He's a vice minister.
Call, um, Kevin Turner, Kevin Turner, up there on Good Springs Road.
Well, he had two other ones that were state did, place a copley and then one over there.
He's got that connection with the state paper. He just did all Saints Field, the one up there.
So that's, that's where that is. I mean, I just need to know if something needs to be done now.
He's trying to pay his tuition.
So I, I don't know if there's something to be done this year. If not, we're off the bat from the spring where I'm going to wind up taxing him way too much. I don't know that he can get it done and then I'll...
Well, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll call Joe tomorrow and pick a time.
But can I just say this? Beware that next year, as soon as the seasons end, it's going to turn to a weed nightmare again, even if you put a pre-emergent down, I believe.
Go to the Lopez fields, they're all the same.
Yeah.
All stuff all around until the season starts.
They're actually not a bad disease. You got to take a look.
Delaware Park is complete. Yeah, and I, they're down all the time.
I mean, I got, the problem is, I feel a lot of those complaints because they think recreation, my dad's take care of this thing. You know, he knew our best, but you know, when you're down there playing field hockey or soccer, you get all the calls and you see all the players, I'm missing out on at least ten, fifteen calls. It doesn't look good on us. I don't know if, you know, it's not so much about the town. It doesn't look like we're doing like...
We go through the same thing. The only reason why I'm saying it's low pack is my kids are there, but...
So what are, what's your suggestion then, how to move forward on this?
I personally think, me, you, Joe and Brian Weeks, let's have a sit-down, figure out what we can do, how we can try to get something done right now. So that way, in the springtime, something will be a little bit easier to handle, even if I got to bring the machine in like I did last year to drag the fields for you.
Right, so my, here's my, the larger story is, I have no problem with the plan. We can work through it. It's the plan that was on the table last October that never came to fruition and it happened in the spring.
Well, let's go, let's go make it happen right now.
No, I can only do what Joe tells me he's going to do and what he has time for. I'm just saying, I don't know if it's working.
I'll call him tomorrow and we'll get together and we'll make time to get the athletic fields done.
Sure. And just as long as it kicks down before the end of the year so I can get that in the next week, so...
I'm not going to have your rec stuff. No, no, absolutely. I don't know much about, other than going on people to get a bottle of Roundup, you know, so that sticks out of my expertise.
I mean, the one saving grace right now is, uh, who was it, Kim?
Jeff.
Jeff. He'll have a spraying license within a couple of months.
Mr. Gregg, you're going to meet with him and Joe and Brian Weeks.
Yeah, okay, we're going to...
Just so you know too, the sprayed was a part of the dugout backstop and all the things which weren't really maintained all year long, so that's part of it.
And they're going to be maintained all year long, starting in the springtime because we'll have a licensed pesticide applicator in our town. All right. But I, no, I will call you tomorrow.
Could you have another topic? I just want to ask Mike.
Yeah, this is a different topic.
Hold on, but Mike, do you have any comments on here?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good, good.
I went by tonight. It's tucked in as tight as it possibly could be. It'll work. I'm assuming they won't be here the rest of the...
No, they're, they're, they're in Buffalo now.
And on back Monday, right?
They'll be back Monday.
And it's fine.
Okay, good, good.
And they're going to roll the parking lot one day.
Yeah, they're definitely rolling the parking lot.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing. And I know Joe got tied up with that last...
And their roller's ten times heavier than what everybody else has.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's going to back it down.
Joe got tied up because the machine broke during that whole, he was kind of, he was up against the wall.
I asked Mike about that, so we got his bird.
I appreciate that.
Good, good.
Are you aware, is there, is there any ordinance about the water basin areas, the water collection areas, you know, what they can use for? Like, for instance, on Wyndham Farm. Do you know if there's an ordinance? Because I don't, I've seen people flying low control planes in there by the houses.
They're, I am ninety-nine percent certain there, there is no ordinance regulating what can be done there. Now, there, now, it would be, if you...
Maybe it's room.
If you wreck, place something that's going to take a volume, well, that, that's, then you're, you're hindering the use of the facility. And I think that you could be probably, that could be looked at as an ordinance.
What development are you talking about? Wyndham Farm? What's that? Wyndham Farm. Is that an association?
No, those are ours.
Okay.
That, the Wyndham Farm basins are clearly the exception because they're, the only ones are actually owned by the township. Every, every other development, they're either an association or an individual. And ours is still in one block.
Which brings me up to Mike used to open the, uh, Taylor Farm. We have three retention basins in Paysette. I think there's one, no, there's, I think one by Ironwood, I think. And we have seventy-five hundred dollars somewhere out there. Can we get that money back and get it into the conference? Because none of the homeowners, those retention basins now have trees that have grown for twenty-three years. Okay, so, you know, how can we get the money out of that trust account? I don't even know who the attorney is anymore.
I fear of the day those things are ever cleared, if they are, because God only knows what's at the bottom of those things. Relative sinkhole, dead animals and whatever else. Okay. Here's the deal. I think we probably do. Um, the attorney that represented the original developer, builder, was Tom Stone, who was based out of Washington. I know Tom.
Is he tired?
But...
Is he tired?
Well, I was just going to say, I think he's retired, at least partially.
How long have they held that money in the trust account?
That money is in the account, so... But I think he's obviously got the rights to it and the problem that...
The association was never formed.
Correct.
Okay, there's no association, nothing.
There's no board of supervisors, there's no...
So I'm like, well, get the money into the town and just let them use it for it?
Well, I don't know if it's a good...
And for the homeowners over there, I hope they have loss assessment on their individual homeowner policies. Which will cover, which will cover, well, no, we're all responsible.
All right, should we go into executive session?
All right, second.
We can take it.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, folks. Have a good night.
Yeah, I, I say you know, maybe...
There's a thing in here about open space and land, so...
Oh, who, who put that in there? Is that, uh... Did I, did I say, you know what? I can't get my own camera.
Motion to come out of executive session to reopen the meeting. PAs.
PAs on.
Motion to come out of executive session. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I can't think of anything. I think my wife's got a little... Says I'm right on. She came out a little. So kind of like, yeah.
What's your, the handcuffs to come in here? She wanted to come.
Okay, so do we have any motions?
Yeah, two. Three? We got to wait for the public to come in there before we do it, right? See, there's only one left?
Yeah.
Come in.
Okay, that's okay. Doors open. Okay, I make a motion that we direct Labor Attorney Jim Piper to develop a policy for a time clock for all municipal employees in the municipal offices. Second.
See me? Well, the code for already does it. Yeah, no, no, I placed the problem without getting to do it, so it's set up to a clock as official...
Record of...
Record of timekeeping.
Kathleen can let her know no more.
In, out, lunch, everything.
Well, actually, the policy doesn't go into effect. We're having the attorney direct it. So the motion is for a policy first, so don't record it. Direct the attorney to draft a policy for the use of the time clock.
Secret practice. Second.
Bob needs to rush for five seconds.
Bob?
Ken?
Yes.
Mark Hadden?
Yes.
Mark Neitz?
Yes, yes. I make a motion to direct the township attorney to draft or amend the ordinance regarding, for first reading for mercantile licensing to be placed under the CFO or her designate name. Second, or his or hers. Could be replaced for twenty years.
Good, good, correct.
Bob? Yes.
Yes.
Mark Neitz?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Don't have a motion yet? Didn't you, weren't you going to do one?
No, I don't.
I remember you saying something, don't we?
Don't encourage him.
Motion to adjourn. Jane, you want to come in? You want to come in?
Who made motion to adjourn?
I did.
I'll second it.
Aye. All right, all have a good night. It's going to be a weekend, I hear.
What kind of weekend?
I haven't heard any, I won't do anything on a peace contract.
Did we make a motion for October twenty-seventh meeting for seven PM to make arrangements? But if we can just do that then on the twentieth, right, Kim?
Before, I was going to say labor practice.
She's destroying, listen, she's destroying.